Welcome to the Sun Prairie Committee, the whole meeting. A special meeting today, and we will be joined by the some members of the Transit Committee. So Jennifer, would you please start out taking the role?
Bowling.
Here.
Crombie.
Here.
Jacobs.
Here.
Yocish.
Here.
McElroy.
Here.
Polinsky.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Stocker.
Here. Thank you, Jennifer. First item is the approval of the minutes from May 18.
I'll move to approve. I'll second it.
Okay, I have a move in second. Any adds, changes, deletes? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, thank you. Don, is there any citizen appearance, public comments?
There are none tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, next item.
I think there is, because I'm Joe Chase, and I'm here for public comment.
Okay, are you here, Joe, for anything?
No.
This? It's for something not on the agenda, correct?
Right.
Okay. Joe, would you please again state your name and address and your comment, please?
I am Joe Chase at 923 Broadway Drive in the city of Sun Prairie. And I wanted to address you folks tonight. And I'll just start out by saying we're in the last week of the month of the Historic Preservation Month that was proclaimed by the mayor. And I just wanted you all to reflect on what you did to support the Sun Prairie Community effort to instill community pride and encourage heritage tourism as dictated or as stated in the proclamation. Or maybe also stated in the proclamation was your renewal of an awareness and foster local pride by supporting our community character because of the historic properties that have been saved from being demolished. So as you all know, in the past year, there have been a number of properties that have been that are historic or were historic that have been demolished. And the whole definition of historic seems to be the crux of the issue because the city says they don't have any way to designate a property as historic. But the property on Vine Street and Main were historic properties, but no one did a research on it except me. The Columbus Street, old J and L Garage, and one of our first auto dealerships in the city on Columbus Street was demolished. And of course, we all know about the Thompson Snyder House that was demolished. And I would also going to say that in the coming months, we see that McGovern's probably will be leveled, and all of those cabins will be removed. And you probably, a lot of you aren't aware of the fact that we have the only dodecagon house in the entire state of Wisconsin, which will be gone in the next few weeks, I'm sure. The dodecagon house means it's a 12-sided house, and it's located at the roundabout of Main Street and Thompson Road. Some of you know it as the Finer House, some of you know it as the Spawn House. Like I said, definitely historic property that is a one of a kind and would have easily been recognized as a historic structure. And I'm sure that there's also some plans in the works for this coming year for some West Main Street properties that may be threatened by part of the Sun Prairie Stronger Plan. So I guess in parting on that, I wanted to read to you the last words of the proclamation. "And I urge all citizens to celebrate National Historic Preservation Month by visiting the Historic Library and Museum, researching our rich local history, or observing the community's many historic structures." I only hope that you all had the opportunity to do that because that's something that I do on a regular occasion. And I think it's an important thing that the community should do. And the Alders should be the model for that. Let me also go on then. That's all I had to say about the proclamation. I just wanted to keep you all aware that that's happening. I also wanted to find out a little bit about the subject matter that I brought to the Committee of the Hall on March 16. When you read the minutes of that meeting, there's no mention that there even was public comment. And you might remember that I talked about the 30 properties that are recognized by the State Historic Society and the National Park Systems as historic properties. And I supplied a list with my commentary. And again, no mention of that list is in the minutes. As I stated, the list actually satisfies one of the conditions of the comprehensive plan to maintain a list of historic properties in the city. So at the end of that March 16 meeting, Alder Stocker offered a referral, and in the minutes, it is transcribed as, Alder Stocker refers to send the public comments to the Plan Commission to add to the comprehensive plan. Now, that would be fairly vague, I would suggest, since it doesn't show that there were any public comments in the minutes. And that would probably leave it up in the air as to what does that referral really mean? What Alder Stocker actually said was, "I would like to make a referral to send the Joe Chase's comments to the Plan Commission as a baseline for the comp plan section that deals with our historic properties on the registries, both state and federal. I'd like to add that to the comp plan as a baseline." So I come to you tonight, and there are two Alders that are on the Plan Commission, and I would like to know where that referral went from two months ago. And seeing it's only a three-page factual list of historic properties already recognized by the state and federal government, I would think it would take very little time on a Plan Commission meeting to be accepted. So I would hope, again, that this would be looked into and find out if there's a stall here for some reason, that this wouldn't be just quickly taken care of at a Plan Commission meeting.
Okay, thank you, Joe. I know Mr. Kugler is on this meeting, and I would ask that, Scott, if you would, please, would you please follow up with Joe? Because I think you were the recipient of the report that Joe had.
Sure, I'd be glad to.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yep, thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. And thank you for your work on that. And I did try and visit the museum, but they were closed, unfortunately, when I was there. So it didn't work out, but thank you. Okay, next item. Any further comments? Doesn't look like it. Okay, next item is Council Liaison Committee Member Reports. Other than Transit Commission or Committee, any other reports? Okay. Hearing none, unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration, discussion, and possible action on the bus rapid transit, brat, and local route bus service. This tonight will, as we go into our discussion, just to set the expectations, we are going to have a vote tonight whether or not to move forward on the resolution that's in your packet. And if that vote passes, it's designed to give direction to staff and this committee to move forward and within the scope that we would like to agree to see it on. So before I get into that part, before we get into that part, I do want to turn this over briefly before Philip begins. I want to turn this over to Al Geyant as Chair of the Transit Committee. And for those of us on this meeting tonight, we can see all the members from the Transit Committee, but for full transparency to our vast listening and viewing audience, I would like it noted that Al would introduce the committee members to both us, if you don't know them, and then also to the general public watching. Al, it's all yours. You're on mute, sir. Al, you're on mute.
Soon you get out of practice, the military says skills deteriorate in 30 days, and there you go. Thirty days, I've got it. Okay, so we don't need to call the Transit Commission to order because we're not going to make a decision tonight. We already made a decision Thursday to make a recommendation, but I will identify them. And Chris Clinton, if you'd wave a little bit, there you go. Melody Rydel, am I saying your name right, your last name right, Melody?
It's Riedel.
Riedel, okay. That's close. I had an R and a D and an L in there. And then Janine Punzel, you are with us as well. Okay. And Chris, we did, and then myself, and then Alder Fasina-Bowling. Fasina, right, and there she is. Okay, great. So I'm just going to do 30 seconds or so and then ask staff to do its presentation, and then allow each of the Transit Commission members to have a short comment, and then turn it back over to Council President Stocker to lead the discussion, to lead you to your action. And so it's kind of funny that this is new business because seven years ago, seven years ago, Mayor Esser asked some of us to start the Transportation Steering Committee, and here we are tonight to kick off the process, to get at what we've laid the groundwork for over seven years. That is to get us some local bus service that connects us to Madison and as well as the faster routes. So tonight, we're talking about the, we already did the BRT vote before. So you're really going to be talking about, do you want the Transit Commission and staff to follow, get started on the process that's laid out in the memo, and bring you back proposals, cost estimates, route suggestions, or not? Are we going to get going on this, or are we not? So with that in mind, I would like to ask staff to make its presentation and then ask each commission member to say what he or she wishes to say. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Don. And welcome, welcome Transit Commission members. Philip, I assume you're taking the lead on the next part.
Yeah, so I'm going to share my screen. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to give a brief update on BRT and local bus service and kind of where we are and how we've gotten here. So the City Council met in late March to consider adding Sun Prairie to the Madison Metro's locally preferred alternative for the Bus Rapid Transit System. The inclusion in the LPA would ensure that the city qualifies for the 65% federal funding for all capital investments associated with the Bus Rapid Transit project and ensure that we are included within the BRT system. At that time, Metro said that the city would need to construct a charging station and a restroom at the Park and Ride and partially fund an electric bus. And in return, the city would receive all-day bus service to the Park and Ride seven days a week at a cost that's very similar to the existing Route 23. So at that same meeting, the City Council approved Sun Prairie's inclusion in the LPA. And to formalize this, the city is going to be required to execute a third-party agreement between the city, Madison Metro Transit, and the Federal Transit Administration. And we initially believed that that agreement would need to be executed by the end of May. But it was determined that this agreement does not need to be executed now and would likely need a significant amount more of review due to the complexity of the agreement and the inclusion of FTA. The BRT will also need, the BRT capital projects will also need to be budgeted for before we can sign the third-party agreement. So that brings us to the main topic of this evening. At that same meeting, the City Council expressed a great deal of interest in local bus service. So as a result, staff requested that Metro provide a specific start date and number of routes that they could provide to the city for local bus service. And Metro has provided a commitment to serve the city with local bus service, up to three routes. They stated that they could provide three midday routes as early as 2022 and all-day service with paratransit in 2024. So the routes that could start in 2022 could expand the existing Route 23, but that would come at an additional cost. All-day service could come either in replacement of the shared-ride taxi or in addition to it, and that could come in conjunction with Bus Rapid Transit. In addition, Metro offered the assistance of their Transit Planning Consultant, Jarrett Walker and Associates, and they're a nationally renowned transit planning firm to help us develop some conceptual routes. So city staff met with their consultants last week to draft a few routes. These routes are not yet complete and will be presented at a later date, but they could be really valuable in helping the city begin a public engagement, be it the scientific survey that would go out later this fall, public engagement meetings, just a really nice starting place to begin those conversations. And to begin creating those draft routes, a number of really key destinations for the bus service to reach were identified. Potential transit-dependent populations, multifamily locations, employment areas, as well as shopping opportunities, and the high schools and middle schools. So that leads us to today, in a timeline of where we would go from here. The very first thing would be a decision from the City Council on whether or not you want the Transit Commission and staff to pursue local bus service. If that were the case, we would continue to develop the conceptual routes through the summer, use those routes with the local bus survey that would go out in the fall. At that same point in time, we would begin budgeting for the capital agreements and bring the third-party agreement forward. After the local bus survey, if the public wants local bus service, we would begin public engagement, and that would be with a variety of stakeholders, everyone from the school district, Sunshine Place, Colonial Center, businesses, individual residents, and impacted populations, really trying to touch every corner of the community and engaging with everyone that would be impacted by the service. Once the routes are iterated and in a place where where the Transit Commission is comfortable with those routes, there'd be a public hearing winter of 2022. And then upon final acceptance of those routes, they would be presented to the City Council for adoption. Those draft routes would be presented no later than January of 2023. In fall of 2023, the operations of the service would be budgeted for. This would give Metro plenty of time to train bus drivers and procure buses if necessary, and it could be implemented in conjunction with the BRT service in August of 2024. And throughout all of the steps in the process, City Council would be invited to meetings and be given progress reports. So that's my presentation, and that kind of leads to the main question of this evening, which is, is this something that we want to pursue?
So, if I may, Council President?
Yes, sir.
I neglected to identify the school district's representative on the Transit Commission, Rhonda Page, and I don't think she's with us tonight. So she's going to be extremely important to presenting vital information in all the options for the local service in all those locations. So if you don't mind, can we maybe start with Melody? I think you're the longest-serving member of the Transit Commission. Do you have a couple of comments you want to make to the Council?
Sure. So through this whole process, I've always been representing the older adults in our community. I work at the Colonial Club, so that is my main focus for being on Transit Commission and making sure that they have good transportation to get to doctor's appointments, grocery stores, and the such. With this BRT comes paratransit transportation services, which is key to our older adults. That would assist them to get into Madison. It would assist them to get into Sun Prairie at a much reduced rate than what they might have had in the past. A simple taxi ride to a doctor on the west side of Madison could easily amount to about $100 per ride. Paratransit, that's not the case. It'd be a few dollars, $3 to $4 for a ride for them to get to their doctor appointments, medical appointments, referrals, whatever grocery store, if they don't want to stay in Sun Prairie, they need special diets, or whatever the case may be. So those are my comments towards the local service and the BRT.
Okay, and I also neglected to mention that Justin, and I'm not able to say your name properly, Justin, from the Madison Metro is here with us as well. So.
Excuse me, Al. Before you go on, I think Alder Jacobs had a question most likely for Melody.
Right, I do for Melody. That's why I thought, you know, if she was testifying, I could ask her a question.
Yes.
Is that acceptable?
Yes, please, please, Alder Jacobs.
Hi, Melody. So based on what I'm hearing you say about representing the Colonial Club, et cetera, is BRT something that you favor? Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I'll just throw in some comments that I'll talk about later, but I agree with Melody in her assessment of the cost. I know when I was campaigning a number of years ago, I checked a Union cab ride for our folks from the Colonial Club to the east side of Madison. At that time, it was $83 round trip. And that's why I had pushed at that time for a way that we could jump from internal, just in the city, to at least getting our people to Easttown where they could catch the network of busing there. Okay, Al, please continue.
Okay, so let's see, we did, Melody, Janine, have we asked you yet for your comment?
Thanks, Al. I'm in strong support of both BRT and the planning process for getting a circulator within the city of Sun Prairie. I was just looking through old emails and some historical information. So while Melody's the longest-serving member of Transit Commission, we've been serving together for a very long time. And so back in 2009, when shortly after RTA was initially passed by Dane County, former Mayor Joe Chase appointed me to this as a Citizens Advisory Committee member to represent Sun Prairie. And then at that point, a position opened up on Transit Commission. So I've been interested in moving transportation forward for the city of Sun Prairie for a good number of years. And even the ad hoc committee process that we worked on, starting back in 2016, we had subcommittees in metro expansion, bus rapid transit, and Park and Ride, where the subcommittee that I had served on back in 2016. And so it's so exciting to be able to say, we got the Park and Ride done, we got the express bus service, and now to have the opportunity for that to potentially, you know, be expanded beyond that even to being part of the BRT loop is really exciting. And there was a letter shared with us that was provided to the Committee of the Hall members from Fred Bartol. And Fred's been, you know, one of the co-conspirators I've been working with for probably, you know, 11 or 12 years. And I thought, I'm just going to share one of the things that he said, which I thought was really kind of summed up the issue here. Costs and budgetary concerns are legitimate, but these need to be weighed against other local, state, and federal resources to which Sun Prairie's contribution will provide access. The potential returns, direct and indirect, on the city's investment and the savings that investment might produce as better and more widely available transit helps advance other city priorities. They must also be weighed against the cost of doing nothing and of passing up an opportunity that may not present itself again in so advantageous a form. And really, with having this opportunity to use Metro's planners, this really is a transformative opportunity for the city of Sun Prairie to be part of this, you know, BRT's initial preferred route and then also this planning process for the, you know, inner-city circulator. And so this is really exciting to me that we're talking about this tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, Janine. So, Al, I bet Chris is up next.
Yeah, you did right. Smart guy.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you that know me well, you know that I spend most of my day in bicycle-related businesses, and that's one of the primary reasons why I was brought into the Transit Commission to give a different perspective of people within the city who are looking at different ways of getting around town. I'm pretty excited about the BRT as it allows people to ride their bikes wherever they live in Sun Prairie to the bus and to get further into Madison for work. They also have the ability to put their bike on the bus, and when they get into Madison, they can ride wherever they happen to work as well. That's their, you know, a little bit easier for those that are commuting both by bus and by bicycle. While working with the bicycle community, I'm also exposed to a lot of folks who don't own automobiles, or they have limited access to automobiles. Maybe they're lower income, maybe they're teenagers and they can't afford a car yet. So there's a lot of non-drivers within the city of Sun Prairie. And I'm in support of our inner-city system for busing as I feel to be important for teenagers, for people of low income, people who don't have multiple cars, people living in the outlying areas of Sun Prairie, to be able to reach those places where they might be able to work, where they might be able to go shop. A good example is a lot of the new consumer retail spaces are out on the west side. And yet, we have a lot of people in Sun Prairie who live in the middle of town, on the east side of town, and on the north side of town without a great system to get all of them to the west side if they're working or shopping, or even recreating, say, going to a movie theater. And likewise, for those same groups who may be going into East Madison to do shopping or for work as well. The combination of an inner-city bus system and the BRT will greatly improve the circumstances for all of those various people within the city of Sun Prairie. So I do think it's important that we are able to tie in both of those systems to create a much better transportation system for a wider range of people.
Okay, and before I call on Alder Bowling, and I'm not sure how you're going to work, since she has due role here as Alder and Transit Commission, we know on the Commission that we've got to come back with convincing information that shows the value and affordability of both the BRT and the local network. We've got to be able to show you the benefits such as families maybe operating with one car and not more than that if they have a bus system. For more than 15 years in Madison, almost 20, we were able to have my family of five operated with one car because I could take the bus or sometimes carpool. The money we save being one car was huge. Some of my neighbors here have three and four cars when they have teens because there's no other way to get around. And then families who have workers downtown will save $1,000 or $2,000 a year and avoid it parking. So we've got to come back and be convincing, the public will come out and show that they want this. We've got to convince you that there is data to show that they will ride it. So Alder Bowling, you're up, and I don't know which way you guys are going to operate as a council, but we're done, and we're here to answer questions.
Alder Bowling, please. There you go.
All right. In regards to the BRT as well as a circulator and just really digging into national trends and use of public transportation, seeing, oh, there's an echo, seeing in regards to our growing population of millennials who are now coming into the workforce, been in the workforce buying homes, and the patterns in which their commitment to sustainability as well as also entry into the market for home owner-biarship. Also, you know, the apartment rental, the apartment rents are high, so thinking about the decisions they have to make monetarily. And part of that is also public transportation, and that is a preferred and a growing preferred system in which to move around to and through locations. So that's one of the things I wanted to call out. The other thing that I wanted to share in regards to the economics... The other thing that I, um, wanted to share in regards to the economics of what the benefits are in regards to opening up Sun Prairie, we're opening up Sun Prairie for people to also enter and come into our downtown area. So that would be part of the opportunity there that I would love to call out. Also the reduced emissions that would be, that would be had by reducing how many cars are on the road. One of the things that we talk about in regards to Main Street and having so much traffic going through, by virtue of having a circulator and a bus, we will be reducing how many cars are actually on the road and also provide some opportunity to look at the flow of tra- traffic in relation to, um, Main Street and other, um, other locations. And in regards to, when I think about this and why, um, I really, I'm, I really want to stress, there's a strategic vision I was reading as part of my onboarding to Alder. It's a twenty thirty-five strategic vision and in there we talk about public transit. And if that's where we have our eye towards, it's, it's in twenty thirty-five, when do, backing in from that date, when do we start that and when do we start to build that opportunity? I do think this is an opportunity for all of our citizens. I see busing, um, or any transit opportunities, even bicycling, um, as a way of, when we're, I look at it in the same light of infrastructure building. So when you make a road, it's not necessarily going to give you direct revenue that you could say dollar for dollar. What we spent here is a benefit that we're reaping. But in regards to the bus, I do see it similarly. It's part of our infrastructure in regards to, it's a way to get to and through different locations in our city. There won't be a dollar for dollar, but it's going to really open up, um, opportunities for people to move around, get to places, commerce, school, friends. And, um, I, I just wanted to bring those pieces out. And also I used to take the bus earlier on when it started. Loved to take the bus. Um, I just wish that it had more, um, oh, uh, that it ran longer because I actually, by the third time that I didn't catch the late bus downtown Madison to come back to Sun Prairie, I was stranded. So I had to have my partner Brian come and pick me up. So after three times of doing that, I'm like, all right, okay, I work late too much. I can't take this bus. So the, but the, the rapid transit, um, and being on that route, I was able to talk to other bus riders and I was very interested as being part of the bicycling subcommittee. We were excited about seeing that bus route start. And so of course I'm on the bus going, why are you taking this bus? Tell me, tell me more. And hearing from people about just having the, the time to decompress before and after work, um, not having to worry about the traffic, there was a long line for people who were getting on that bus. And as well as I, I talked to an individual where they shared, you know, their family's from Sun Prairie. They were looking at different places to buy their home. And because of that bus being there, because they, they really wanted to, the sustainability, um, ethic that they are, they felt passionate about as well as being an emerging, you know, I would say mid-career professional. Um, they, they wanted to be near a bus route and that is why they chose to buy their house here. And so these are anecdotal, um, stories, but it was really fascinating for me to hear the different reasons why and some of the opportunities in regards to expanding. So sometimes we'll say, oh, there aren't a lot of people on the bus when I see, you know, but it depends on which way you're looking at the bus route when it comes. If you go to the park and ride, you'll see a line of people. And the expansion of that would potentially increase it because of riders like myself who may need to go at a different time to work or come home later, that we would have access to be able to use that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Bowling. Al, are you going next?
No, I, I actually said it and, uh, I just applaud what Alder Bowling, uh, said. What a great addition to the commission. Thank you, Mayor, for appointing her to the Transit Commission.
Okay, further before I open it up for discussion with the council. Okay, hearing none, I would like to open the floor to any council members to ask questions or, or speak to the topic at the end. Okay, Alder Yokeish, please. You're on mute, Bob.
Thank you. Uh, I think I've mentioned earlier that, uh, you know, I took the bus for a number of years working for the university and certainly we had an internal UW, uh, bus system, which I utilized over, over the years quite a bit. Uh, but one of the questions that I'd like to see addressed would be, um, how, uh, if there are similar communities to Sun Prairie that, uh, are successfully operating a, uh, local bus system, you know, how they're doing that and, uh, uh, you know, some good examples of that, uh, that perhaps we can, uh, uh, would be good information to, uh, help us determine whether to go forward with this or not. Thank you.
But such as Manona, I tried to get ahold of Manona for the past few days and it kept telling me all circuits were busy when I dialed their transit number. Thank you, Alder Yokeish. Alder Crombie, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so I have a story to tell you. It won't be very long. Um, when I lived in Madison, I took the bus everywhere. When I was in college, that, that, you know, taking the bus got me around. When I had my dau- when I had my daughter, we, we took it because we only had one car. So we took the bus everywhere. Then I decided in nineteen ninety that we would move to Sun Prairie. When I moved to Sun Prairie, there was a week, and I lived in Madison, I mean, I, I worked in Madison. There was a week and a half where I did not have a car. And I had, um, it was a struggle for me because I didn't have money to pay. At that time, it was going to cost me like eighty dollars to take Union, the cab, but I had to be at work. And, um, just because at that time I was a single parent. And I would take about probably an hour and a half to get home from work. I would walk to the bus stops because I lived over by, um, or I worked over by Manona. And, um, Manona's transportation was very minimal. And I had to walk all the way to a location that was over by, um, off of fifty-one. And, um, it, it was really, I just remember thinking to myself, you know, Sun Prairie needs a bus. And this was back in two thousand, um, well, yeah, probably back in two thousand. But, um, I, you know, I think the bus service, you know, as we're growing, it's a quality of life. Um, the, um, you know, seniors needed, teenagers needed to get to jobs. Um, a lot of parents only have one car. Um, single parents needed, low-income people. Um, we have to, and I like the fact, I like both of these services. Um, it's going to be, um, this is a well-defined plan and I'm glad that we're going to be communicating more and being more transparent on, on this plan. Um, you know, and then the para transit, you know, I have, I work at Colonial View Apartments during the day. And I have so many residents that I have to find transportation for because half of them don't have vehicles. The other, um, and then they, right now with RSVP not working, um, it's hard to find tran- I have to contact the Dane County Transportation in Madison, um, to get them rides to get to, to pick up their prescriptions or to go to a doctor's appointment. A lot of like UW Health here in Sun Prairie actually transferred to, um, they, they closed their office during COVID and they were at the, the Windsor location. So it was really hard for a lot of our residents to even take the taxi to get to certain doctor's appointments. Um, but I think that, um, I'm, I'm supportive of this right now and I can't wait to hear more. I can't wait till we move forward and find out more about, um, the impact that this is going to do to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder McElroy.
Thank you, Alder Stacker. Um, is there any way that the city or Metro has any stats on the usage of the bus service pre-COVID? Do we have any idea, um, whether or not, uh, it was utilized a lot? Do we have numbers?
Are you referencing our particular route or the bus system generally?
No, I'm talking about our particular route.
Yeah, it was doing quite well. Uh, for a new route, one of the things that the trans- uh, that the planning manager at Metro mentioned is it's, it's picking up steam. Um, on our most heavily utilized days, the park and ride, for instance, was seventy-five percent of the way full.
Okay, now you're saying the park and ride.
Yeah.
It, were all of those cars in the lot for people who were riding the bus or were people carpooling?
That I'm not, I'm not, I'm unsure of. Uh, one of the things that was mentioned at the time that we started the bus too, I guess to, to, just to, to frame the, to frame everything up is we would really need about two years to understand exactly how successful the route would be. Uh, but we were seeing high utilization. I would assume that a, a certain number of those cars were, were likely carpoolers. Uh, but there was a number of people getting picked up on the circulator route within the community as well, particularly by Walmart.
Okay, um, I have one more question and that is with COVID, um, a lot of people have been working from home. And I know I have brought this up before, um, but I am going to bring it up again. Um, I personally know quite a few people who are not going back into Madison to work. Uh, my next-door neighbor works for the state. She will be permanently at home. Um, my daughter-in-law, who works for Slipstream on the west side, will be permanently at home. In fact, all of the employees for Slipstream will be permanently at home. Um, I'm concerned that, well, we've got our own staff, that some of this, some of our staff are going to be working from home. What is that going to do to bus ridership?
I think that's, uh,
That's a concern.
That nationally, I think that that's something that is, is a bit of an unknown. Uh, the one nice thing about the planning process is it would give us a little bit of time to, to see how things rebound. Um, Justin, I'm not sure if you have any ideas yourself, if, if things have been shared at, uh, uh, the national level?
Uh, sure. Uh, and so for those of you who haven't met, Justin Stumber, I'm general manager of Metro Transit. Uh, thanks, thanks for having me here. Um, uh, so I, I think there's no doubt that in the short term, there will be some ridership impacts, um, from COVID as people, uh, have gotten used to other habits, whether it be working from home or biking or, or whatever. Um, but I, I think what's unique, um, or, or more unique about Madison and Sun Prairie region is that we're experiencing remarkable growth. Um, and so I, I think that there will be, you know, even if some of the people that used to ride are now working from home, there, there will no doubt soon be many, many more people, um, moving to Sun Prairie that will eventually ride the bus if given that option. And so, um, I, I think, you know, to your, to your point, I, I think, yes, there will be some impacts, some long-term impacts to, to existing ridership, but those will eventually be more than outweighed by, um, by growth in the community.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to say Alder Guyen and so, so used to seeing that.
I, I accept. I wanted to be the ninth Alder. I accept your nomination. All favors say aye.
Yeah.
One thing about, um, the folks who can work at home, those are usually information jobs, pretty well-paid. Low-income jobs almost always are jobs onsite and standing. So those folks won't be able to work from home and do the job, uh, that, that pay lower wages to some store, someplace where they, they've got to be there and they're standing all day. So, um, if our heart is with getting transportation for folks who have only one car or no car, um, they still are probably going to have to work onsite someplace, which means they need transportation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Al. Alder Bowling.
So, um, being part of the planning at our organization and we have, we're in the tech space as well. It's interesting because I'm, I, I do agree, Alder McElroy, that there, there are some changes happening in regards to behavior in regards to if I'm preferring to work at home or if I'm working in the workplace. Um, what's been interesting to, for me to see, I was just actually returning to the office this week and coordinating with employees returning to the office. And that is still a driving need for our work, our, our particular organization. And we are a tech firm. And when I was doing some reading, just trying to understand some of the landscape, just so happens that, um, MadRap had sent out some information this week in regards to Madison's labor market growing, the technology market forty-seven percent from twenty fourteen and nineteen and how much more it's going to be growing. And I do think that this, you know, as Dane County continues to thrive in this area, the, the folks who, I would say, I, I'm going to go back to millennials. I hate bucketing people into groups, but just looking at sociology of me, um, is this, the downtown is, draws them, right? So I'm seeing this even in the workplace, is people wanting to go back to the workplace, they want to be around people. They want to be downtown capital. Um, and I think that with the growth, people, the, the, the housing market's too hot for people, that everyone to live in Madison. So that's, that, it's, it's hitting our outlying areas of the Madison region, Sun Prairie being one of them. One of the things I didn't say earlier that I wanted to say is it's, it's also, um, something to consider is, if Sun Prairie, Sun Prairie is the second largest, um, city outside of Madison and Dane County, yet we're the only one that doesn't have a connectivity through bussing. Something to think about. I know that Oregon doesn't, but I'm, the outlying near areas.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alder McElroy.
Thank you, Fustine. I appreciate that. Um, I, I am more concerned about the yearly subsidy than I am the outlay of money upfront. Um, primarily because if the bus does not get used like we hope, then that's a drain on taxpayer dollars. Um, I would like to see an out clause. Is there any way we can have an out clause if this is not something that works?
I, I can address that. So there's, there's always an out clause. Um, and we have the exact same situation with the shared ride taxi. Uh, there are also a number of different ways that we could, uh, approach the topic. So for local bus service in particular, uh, we could either add local bus service in addition to the shared ride taxi or in replacement of the shared ride taxi in conjunction with that para transit service. And that could be a revenue-neutral endeavor if, if, if that is the, the way that you decide to pursue it as a council. So, uh, but there, we're never wholly locked into it. Um, you know, but, but that said, there might be penalties for leaving at specific times. Uh, one of the things that I know that is, is currently going on that we are working with Metro to do is come up with new structures for this that to prevent some of the, uh, the shocks to the system and come up with more, more stability throughout Metro generally for all of the, the communities, including Sun Prairie.
Thank you, Philip. I have one more question, or actually it's a comment. Um, recently, somebody on city staff made the comment to me that without the BRT, um, this could affect economic development in the future. And with that being said, that, that made me think a lot, um, about, you know, people, do we have enough people here in Sun Prairie that can, um, that can fill the, the workforce here? So bringing people from Madison, the BRT would be beneficial. That being said, how do they get from the park and ride where the BRT, I'm assuming would drop them off, to where they would work here in town? How does that work?
So, so that's where the local bus would come in. Uh, so they're, they're really operating in two different ways. The BRT is the kind of the regional connection. They're going to like the interstate and then the local bus would be like the local roads to get you that last mile that you need to get, that, to, to your final destination. We have heard that from businesses throughout the area. I know that the, the owner of the Park One Fifty-One Business Park has been a big supporter of transit and it's for that very reason, bringing employees in from Madison into the business park. And we've heard same, same thing, uh, from the, the Northeast Business Park, uh, certain employers within there.
It's my understanding too, that Trocti has weighed in on this as well.
But that's, that's what I've heard as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, if not, I have some. Uh, first one is for Melody. Melody, you mentioned para transit. I was surprised. I thought we had para transit already in place. Is it not?
So the only way that the para transit works is if the older adult can get out to the American Family Parkway, um, via the taxi. And then they pick them up from there, I believe. The other option is, um, getting into East Town Mall and then they get the para transit there. But otherwise, we don't have other para transit in town. And it's difficult for our older adults to maneuver to get, um, first of all, to get into the taxi, then to get out and then they have to switch a bus. Um, Um, to make that all work for them is difficult.
Okay, I, I'm surprised because I thought Frank, who used to be in our community, who was, uh, eyesight challenged, I'll say that.
Yep.
You know who I mean?
Yeah.
I thought he had paratransit all the time that was coming within our district to take him to various places.
I believe he had to use our local taxi in order to get to, um, where he was working or volunteering at, and then from there he could use paratransit. But I don't believe paratransit doesn't come into Sun Prairie.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. I know one thing, and for the Transit Commission members, you probably, excuse me, work the same, but one of the traits I think that this council prides itself on is looking at things from different perspectives. And I think that often makes us better in our decisions. I, I just want to throw out, um, some of the, some of the perspectives, I guess I want to state, ones that Alder McElroy hasn't already stated. I'll, I'll go off of the, the out strategy. Is, is this going to be set up as an annual review that if we, I mean, how, how long we locked, looking to be locked into this, I guess, Philip?
Uh, right now, the, this, the contract track structures are being negotiated with Metro. Uh, that's going to be kind of an ongoing thing over the next, uh, through, through the end of the year. Um, so right now, I, I don't, I wouldn't feel comfortable speculating, but near the end of the year, there will be more information about that. Uh, that's, that's kind of part of the whole stability thing after what happened in two thousand nineteen.
Okay, because I, I would want an annual review, I mean, at a minimum, and preferably no, no penalties if we opt out. That would be the preference. Um, might not be possible, but I think that would be good for our taxpayers.
If, if I could, Mr. President, just add, add on to that, just for, I want to make sure the, the city council has as much information as possible is one of the challenges with adding bus service to any community, ours or, or any community, is there is costs that are incurred to add that service, right? There's additional buses that have to be purchased in order to do that. There's additional staff that needs to be hired uh, in order to do that. There's additional administrative staff that needs to be added in order to accommodate that. Anytime a community changes its level of service, meaning it's less service or eliminates it altogether, that impacts all the other communities, right? They have to either pick up that cost or there, there has to be somehow an elimination of the cost, meaning the staff need to be laid off, the assets need to be sold, whatever, you know, the debt needs to be extinguished in some way. Um, so I guess I, I want you to know that it won't be in other communities' interests, Middleton, Pittsburgh, everybody else that receives service as well as Madison's interest to have the city, uh, go into this space, meaning adding bus service and then withdrawing, uh, the bus service. Um, that, that's not going to be desirable in the sense of, to your point, Alder Stocker, no penalty, uh, because the other communities will be penalized, right? They have to pick up all of that cost, whether it be debt for capital like buses uh, or staffing, meaning bus drivers and administration, if we're no longer a payer. Um, and so I guess I want us to, to, to know that moving in is that, um, you know, that, that, that's going to be hard to accomplish, to, to leave the service at any point in time, anytime we wish, at no penalty, uh, for doing so because there is a penalty to everybody else in the system. And so they're going to have an interest in saying Sun Prairie should share in that impact, meaning a penalty or entanglement for withdrawing. I think similar, uh, things could be said if we were to leave like our relationship, uh, other relationships that we have, uh, contractual relationships, there often is a, 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 um, barriers to, uh, uh, dissolution, I guess is how I would phrase it. So I guess I just would want you to know that going in, um, that this is, and, and think about it in the way of, is this an asset to the community that we hope is successful? Or is there a, a, a lot of focus on how we get out and, and no impact? Um, I, I don't know that we'll be successful in the latter.
Okay, thank you very much, Aaron. And that's, that's kind of where I was going with it. So when we get, if and when we get into this, it's for the long haul. We don't, we're going to be locking in for what, ten years probably?
Well, I, I, I would, if I could, Alder Stocker, I would, I wouldn't phrase it as locking in. I think locking in means you can't get out. You can get out, and Philip has said that, you know, and Metro would certainly say that. You can get out. What we're saying is that leaving the system, there's partners that remain, and those partners that remain will want the, the, the Sun Prairie to share in the burden that they now have to take on because we have left. So it, locked in means you, in my mind, I could be wrong, but locked in means you can't get out. You can get out, but there is going to be a impact, a financial impact of getting out. And the, the other, and there'll be an impact on everybody else the same, Middleton, Pittsburgh, it, it's reciprocal, right? It's, it's a bond i- in, in such a way. So I think it would be fair to say, Alder Stocker, that if we were to leave, that, that we, there would be an impact for us doing so versus locked in if, if, if you're willing to indulge me that.
Okay, thank you. I probably used the wrong terminology.
Sorry.
Clarifying.
Yep.
Alder Yoki.
Uh, yeah, I guess I had a, a question on, uh, uh, maybe asking Madison Metro in general how this operates. Do fare, what percentage do fares generally cover versus, uh, the, uh, uh, city funding for that? And I know certainly there, we've talked about economic development benefits of the, of bus and, uh, benefits to those who have no other option for transportation. Uh, but I was just curious on that. And I'm sure there's lots of models that we could use in Sun Prairie, but.
So, uh, yeah, I'm happy to take that. Um, so, you know, I don't have the specific data for the Sun Prairie Route Twenty-Three. Um, it's really tough because it was implemented in a partial year in twenty nineteen and then in twenty twenty, obviously was just crazy. Um, so we don't have a full year of normal operation for the Route Twenty-Three. Uh, so that gives us some challenge in, in projecting dollars. Um, but I can tell you, overall, system-wide, uh, we recoup about twenty-five, around twenty-five percent of our total expenditures from fares. Um, now, obviously, that varies fairly dramatically from one route to another, or one area of the city to another. Um, but certainly, uh, but, but overall, system-wide, it's about twenty-five percent of our operating budget comes from fares.
If I could add on to that, I believe that we budgeted fairly conservatively and it was fifteen percent that, that we were expecting in fare box recovery.
Thank you. I, I, I do want to add, if, if I may, that, uh, I certainly share Alder McElroy's concerns with the impact of, of COVID on, on all of this. And, uh, I appreciated the comments that we have a little lead time to really study the impact and how we uh, get back. But I think we'd, uh, uh, it's, it's an excellent point and we certainly need to take that into consideration as we're looking at this. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Bowling.
So I, I think this is really reinforcing why I see this as an infrastructure build. I know it is, um, it has a tendency to be able to generate some revenue. But when we were talking about in, uh, impact, when I was listening to, um, Erin Oppenheimer speak, what I was thinking about was the unintended impact of people making decisions to work at a particular employer here in Sun Prairie, or someone who purchased a home to be next to the bus route, or somebody who has designed their life around transportation through, um, bus to get them to be able to have, uh, a livelihood. And so I, I see it as more than, you know, the, the income, but there is, there is the, the wonder in regards to are there other, um, ways to sustain this particular system? And I think part of what I love that we're proposing to do in this, um, tonight is really design around the usage and take the time to really get that information. So we're making sure that this is going to be utilized and utilized well for, based on what we're hearing from our community members. So I just wanted to, it was just some of the reflection that was going through my mind as I was listening.
Thank you. Thank you, Alder Bowling. Yes, uh, I have similar comments. The brick and mortar office is not the same as it was two years ago. Um, as Alder McElroy said, there's, there's people who are not going into an office and some offices are coming up for, for lease. Um, as a result, people, people are finding that they may be, and businesses or employers are finding people may be more efficient working from home and not needing to go into, uh, into that, um, setting as they had before. And so, yeah, I think this is going to have an impact on what we look at as far as as ridership. And as Alder Yoki said, it's good to have that, that lead time in between. One of the concerns I have too, that I'd like us all to think about is if we start, uh, sending people in droves into Madison, what is that going to do to our businesses here? I know our businesses are crying for, for employees. They would like to see people, you know, the big mantra is, you know, live local, work local. And if we start sending people into, into Madison to work, you know, we're losing a lot of that workforce. Plus I have a big, you know, I think we should do what we can to encourage people to shop locally. And again, if the bus is too convenient and they decide that they're going to take it, uh, into Madison to shop, that's going to impact our businesses. So I just wanted to throw that perspective out. Alder Stevens, do you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I wanted to build upon your comment of, you know, office structure changing. And instead of just focusing on the impact of what it might have to Madison um, in the direction south, is uh, actually looking at it as reinforcing the opportunity of having the local routes here. So if families can have someone working from home, perhaps that means they're getting rid of a vehicle if they have the opportunity to travel within our community, if they have the opportunity to get to the stores, to get to where they're doing most of their errands, um, and encouraging them to stay local, then I, I think, um, looking at it through that frame of mind, uh, can be really helpful. And on those rare instances when you might need to take a bus to go into the office, um, or you're working a hybrid situation, perhaps that's where the BRT and the local routes can really play that significant role in creating this change, uh, reducing cars and building our sustainability within our community. So you can get to Madison, but you can also get around here in Sun Prairie. I think that looks really appealing to those coming from Madison to work here. Right now, we dump them off at a park and ride and it's really hard to get from there to anywhere else unless you work within Park One Fifty-One. Um, it, it's a challenge to get from there to other places within our community to work. So I see this as a great opportunity. I'm really thankful to the staff and to our Transit Commission for taking up this, um, especially after our last conversation in March about um, Bart and really exploring the opportunity of having some local routes. I think this is a very important step for us.
Thank you, Alder Stevens. I couldn't agree with you more. I think our local connector is as important, if not more than, than Brot. Um, I think keeping, keeping, uh, getting people to working in the city and shopping in the city is, is key. Okay, any other, any other comments?
Steve, could I comment?
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Steve. So this, of course, comes as no surprise to all of you. You know that I am deeply committed to transportation and to transit. It's something that I have talked about from the very beginning when I began running for election. So, but I'd like to go back, I, now and talk to you about why I feel so strongly about this. And I have been reflecting on this over the, since our last meeting, making notes to ourselves. So in my own thinking through this, I asked myself, why BRT and local bus service now? And my number one reason that I come up with is growth. So Jen Harper, our museum director, has done a graph, uh, graphing the, the population, charting the population of Sun Prairie. She went way back into the late eighteen hundreds up through twenty forty, and that line is breathtaking. When you look at that line from like nineteen seventy, so in nineteen sixty to nineteen seventy, Sun Prairie doubled. Nineteen seventy was ten thousand people. Now in twenty forty, it's going to be fifty thousand people. That line is extraordinarily steep. Same thing is going to be true of all of Dane County and the city of Madison. Their lines won't be as sharp because they haven't got the big base. But if it wasn't for that growth, this whole conversation about BRT and bus service would be way different. If we weren't growing rapidly, there wouldn't be a need for us to worry about bus service and, uh, BRT service in twenty twenty-four. We'd be able to get along for a while yet. We'd be okay. But it's what's coming that is going to drive this, and we have to anticipate that and provide for it. Madison tells us the time is going to come. You won't be able to afford to park your car in downtown Madison because there will be no space and the cost will be so high. So the driver in this, in my mind, is growth, the rapid growth that we're experiencing in this area and is experienced in Sun Prairie as well as the rest of the county. My second major reason in my answers to myself of why now is opportunity. Metro Transit is coming to us and they're providing us with the opportunity, BRT. We, it, it's a, a fortunate set of circumstances, but when they went to their new distribution facility or transit facility, suddenly they're out by us and it makes it logical for them to come by Sun Prairie, and that gives us BRT service. Local service is also an opportunity that Metro Transit has brought to us because now they're saying they can make the equipment and the staff available. And there was a point back three or four years ago where they were hedging because they didn't have that. The opportunity is in our hands. The growth is there with the demand, the opportunity is there. And my third reason is the federal funds, the availability. If that federal money wasn't there, this would be a whole different kind of conversation that we would have. Justin wouldn't be able to, uh, present us the opportunities and, uh, Aaron and Connie would be hard pressed to dig up the money. Those are not opportunities that are going to exist forever. The growth is going to be there, yes. But Metro's avail, availability to provide for this and willingness to do that, that could change based on other needs. And of course, the federal funding is not going to be around forever. There may be some federal funding in the future of the magnitude we're talking about, but we don't know. Then I had several other reasons why I think this is important. Next one is sustainability. You just created a sustainability committee because you're so adamant that that's important. Well, Justin has, uh, he doesn't have him with him tonight, but he could show us, um, illustrations of how many cars a bus takes off the road and how much, uh, carbon is no longer emitted into the atmosphere because of that. That's something that we care about and we're going to care about more in the future. Transit-oriented development, that's something that's going to happen in Sun Prairie where we use our zoning tools to provide certain, uh, incentives for housing, especially housing, but also businesses to align themselves with the transportation routes of the buses. That will be an opportunity to get greater density in places that will use it. That's attractive for the city in the long term. The BRT and the local buses will tie Sun Prairie to the employment centers in Madison and Dane County. So downtown Madison is the huge driver in all of Dane County now and will continue to be. Even Route Twenty-Three gets us there, but BRT will get us there quicker. But BRT can get people to the west side of Madison in a time that is attractive for them, an hour or less, and they can on the way work in the bus because it's available. And they can, on the way, work in the bus because it's available, and the buses will be equipped with Wi-Fi. So it isn't a matter of us drawing people out of Sun Prairie to work in Madison. It could easily be a two-income family where one person is working in Sun Prairie, and the other family member needs to get into the employment centers in Madison. Now they can live here and get into those employment centers in Madison. And then equity. Equity, uh, just last week, you approved the, uh, uh, conversion therapy ban because you wanted to speak to the importance of equity and protecting people. Well, transportation is a huge item that is treated inequitably based on income, maybe on, on other factors as well. But we have people in this community that do not have transportation options. And we now have the ability to provide that both within our city and out of our city into Madison by embracing the bus service. And my last item that I've always been excited about, maybe I'm the only one, but I picture in my mind that Sun Prairie could be the transit hub for northeast Dane County. So what does that mean? That could bring a lot of people into Sun Prairie every day because they want to link up to the BRT system, possibly to the local service. But when they're done with work, when they come back to their ca- car, they're likely to shop in Sun Prairie. They're right here. So we've got supermarkets, heavens, we've got supermarkets and pizza restaurants. We've got them fixed with that, but a whole lot of other things that they could do right in our community, and then take it with them to the other places they might go, including Marshall and Columbus and Waterloo and all of those areas. So Sun Prairie could be that transportation hub for northeast Dane County. So I certainly agree with the need for us to be responsible with the dollars that the community entrusts us. And with that, we need to have contracts that are responsive to the situation that we see. I have very little fear about the demand into the future. Yes, the COVID will change some patterns of behavior, but my daughter-in-law is going back into the office. So if we start matching up daughter-in-laws, we're gonna have to get a whole lot of different voices there. Those anecdotal probably don't answer that. Some people will go back, some businesses will, some won't. Some people will prefer it. Certainly, some people will work, and they will live here, and they'll be working in companies in whole different geographic places. I think the growth is the issue that drives all of that for me, so I'm not worried about it. I'm not saying that to the sense that I would want contracts that we can never get out of. We had a conversation with Justin today in a different forum where we were talking about these needs for, for doing that. But just as Aaron said, we have to step into this believing that we're gonna be a partner with a whole lot of other communities and other organizations, M A T C, the university, other people. And all of us need to commit long-term to this. We do need options to get out of this, but we won't be able to do it on a dime. We won't be able to turn a corner and get out. We need the options to get out. We need to have mechanisms that allow us to do this. But I really doubt that's ever gonna be necessary. I think the growth is gonna swamp us, and we need things like this so that the growth doesn't overwhelm our transportation. To go out to cities like Seattle, you can't get around. They lost that. They got behind the eight ball on, on transportation, and the growth came, and the systems aren't there. I think we in Dane County have the perfect opportunity to do this. I think it's a wonderful thing. And I, I'm good with this going forward. We'll figure out the, the details, and you will have plenty of kicks at that can of the details. So you'll get contracts back that'll make your eyes water to figure them out. We can't wait for that time to come. We need to begin planning this local route so at least conceptually we know what's there. We need to tell Justin and Metro Transit that we want to be part of this. We want to be on the team. We want to be on the bus. And so I think we're, we've got some momentum going with this. I'm very optimistic about it. I hope you feel the same way, and we'll continue this movement forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Yeah, I think where we're coming from though, or I don't want to speak for the council, but, you know, we're the fiduciary agents for our taxpayers also. We have to make sure that, you know, we're utilizing the taxpayer funds to the best possible outcome, whether it's bus or police officers or whomever. And so I think that's, you know, that's where we're coming from on this concern. If we go ahead and contract with Metro, and we find out there's little ridership that doesn't sustain what we're investing in, that's where, you know, it's the what-if clause. You know, I think that's where everything's going. Um, and addressing your equity, um, just a quick story. I had a coworker in Philadelphia a number of years ago, uh, did not have any personal vehicle. Um, he and his family did everything on public transportation and found a different place on the other side of Philadelphia, and actually moved their entire household in various trips on public transportation. I don't know how they got those dressers into a bus, but they, uh, actually moved everything. So there, I mean, it's the only way sometimes people can, uh, get around. So what we have before us, is there any other comments or questions before we move forward? Okay, what we have before?
Steve, I have one question. I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, Alder Jacobs.
Um, and, and the question is actually for you. So you said, you said, oh, I don't want to speak for the council. So who were you speaking for?
It was, it was myself.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? So the resolution we have before us is that the common council of the city of Sun Prairie would direct the Transit Commission and city staff to investigate and plan for local bus service, uh, implementation. So the bus rapid transit is part of that. So after hearing all the comments, would anybody like to make a motion to accept that? Alder Stevens, I see your hand up.
Yes, I would like to make the motion to accept this recommendation and approve.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, so Alder Stevens made the motion, seconded by Alder Bowling. Any other questions, comments, before we take the vote? Okay, Jennifer, would you please read the roll?
Bowling?
Aye.
Crombie?
Aye.
Jacobs?
Aye.
Yoke?
Aye.
McElroy?
You're on, you're on mute.
Alder McElroy, you're muted.
I think we read your lips as an aye.
Aye.
Polinsky?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Stocker?
Yeah, as long as this is a resolution to move, uh, and we're not committing, I would vote aye. Okay, so that pass is unanimous?
Yes, eight-zero.
Okay, thank you. And thank you Transit Commission for your work on this and future work on this. Okay, next item is the report of the council president. And I just want to, uh, clean up from our last meeting, uh, ran out of time. So I did want to update the council on a meeting that the mayor and city administrator and myself had with, uh, school board superintendent and school board president. Uh, we had a meeting, very good, uh, they gave some updates on their side. We did the same on ours. Uh, they are interviewing two companies for their equity audit, uh, which our own RFP will be coming to the council at some point in the near future. The, they are hiring an equity director, and, uh, that will be very soon. They would like to set up a tour with all of the council of the new West Side High School. It'll be a hard hat tour, more or less, but they would like to set that up, uh, at some point, uh, maybe in June or July or sometime this summer. And I ask that, it would be a good time for us to get together with the school board to also do that in conjunction. So, um, it'd be council and school board doing the, the tour of the new high school. Along that same line, they would also like to give us a tour of the, if you have not had the opportunity, the Bank of Sun Prairie Stadium. Um, that, uh, I also ask if we could do that in conjunction with the school board. It looks like, uh, at this point, if all things are, stay the same, that, uh, the keys will be turned over to the new high school beginning, uh, in June of 2022, but it will be a rolling turnover. So in other words, the first keys may come to a certain part of the building in June and conclude in August. So this will all be happening next year in 2022. At the same time in 2022, Cardinal Heights will become Central Heights. Um, they will rename it, uh, I suppose they still get, uh, chums out of that somehow, but, uh, I think they're trying to get away from that, that term. There's a strategic plan right now, um, as far as a refresh, uh, of, of the Sun Prairie School District, uh, and that'll be launching with the opening of the West High School. And, uh, let's see. I think that is, that is about it. Paul or Aaron, do you have anything to add to that?
No, Mr. President. I thought, I thought that was a, a good report, so.
Yeah, very thorough, Steve.
Okay.
I have nothing to add.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so next item is report of the city administrator, Mr. Oppenheimer.
Yeah, I just had two quick items to, to mention, Mr. President, is, uh, one, I went on, uh, two kind of tours today. One was of the wastewater treatment plant, uh, expansion. As you know, that's a large, large project expansion, twenty million dollars. Um, it's on time and under budget, so that's good, good news. Uh, and then I also had the opportunity to, uh, tour the splash pad, uh, today. Um, and so we're on track for a June thirtieth, uh, ribbon cutting, hopefully, for the new, uh, splash pad. And so you can now see some of the, the elements of the project. And so I, I think it's worth, uh, taking a look at if you, if you haven't yet, just to kind of see it take shape out there. Um, and over the next few weeks, you'll see a lot more, uh, happening. So, uh, two, two, uh, obviously, large-scale, nice projects in our community that are moving forward.
Thank you very much. So thank you for the heads up. And everyone, you now have, uh, a month and a half to get out in order, or get your, uh, swim gear. And, uh, so you could be ready to join in the ribbon cutting and, uh, splash pad, uh, initial, initial testing. I think, uh, we should probably do a quality control check on that, and we should all be available for that ribbon cutting. Thank you very much, Aaron. And again, uh, I'm so happy to hear the wastewater treatment plan is on, on track because the, that whole crew, they worked through the entire winter, I believe. Luckily, in some of the more mild winter we had, um, they kept pushing forward, you know, just because we needed to have that in place, and I'm so appreciative of that. So thank you very much. Okay, next, uh, jump back on the agenda. So I assume we have a report of the mayor.
Um, oh, that's right. I thought we were taking that off, so I don't have a report repair, prepared.
Oh, we were. I don't know. I, I, I didn't question it because I thought you had some, something.
Something worth saying.
Something to say.
Well, I can always say something. It's not worth much. There will be another appointment or two that'll be on your agenda. We're cleaning those up with, uh, Jennifer Wood has been, uh, very helpful with all of those, uh, board and commission appointments. You know, Jennifer is gonna be leaving us sadly. Um, I talked to her last week. Uh, her husband has a different job in Peoria, and I said, well, that's fine. Doesn't mean anything to you. You can stay here, but I, I couldn't. I tried, Steve. That's my report. I tried to get Jennifer to stay, and I was unsuccessful. She likes that guy, apparently. She's going with him.
Yeah, darn. Well, you know, if the, you know, and hopefully, uh, we're gonna bring back either in the next, uh, meeting or the following, again, a discussion of in-person meeting, but depending on how long we go Zoom, Jennifer, you don't have to, you don't have to leave. You can Zoom from anywhere.
Hey, there you go.
So, so Jennifer, though, please take a note if, uh, you had removed that from the.
We will. I'm sorry that that's on there. I'll fix that, though. It'll, it won't be on there for next week and going forward.
Okay, yeah, I, I didn't question it because I thought Paul was gonna say something. Okay, next item, referrals. Anyone have a referral? Okay, no referrals, then I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Apose. Thank you very much, everybody, for attending this special meeting, and have a very wonderful evening.